I'd like to call the Front Royal Town Council meeting to order tonight for Monday, September the 28th, 2020. Tonight, when we do our Pledge of Allegiance, we have Boy Scout Troop Four to come forward and to lead us in a pledge of allegiance, and their senior leader is Caleb Holmes. So would you please stand while we have the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Presley, could I have a roll call, please?
Mayor T. Walt.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sealot.
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell.
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie.
Here, thank you.
Councilman Holloway.
Here.
Councilman Meza.
Here.
Councilman Thompson.
Here.
Next item tonight is item number four, approval of the minutes, the regular council meeting minutes of September the 14th, 2020, special meeting work session minutes of September the 8th, 2020, work session minutes of September the 21st, 2020. Do you hear a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the regular council meeting minutes of September 14th, special meeting work session minutes of September 8th, and work session minutes of September 20th, 2020.
Have a second.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. Next item tonight is receipt of petitions or correspondence from the public. Before we open this up, I would like to make a statement that I want to -- we're going to pretty hold pretty much the three minutes tonight, so anybody would like to speak, please give your name, address, and hold your speech to three minutes, or pretty close to that. Thank you. Ms. Presley, our first speaker.
Gary Kushner.
I'm Gary Kushner, 1106 Fitchett Road. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, for the opportunity to address you. At the September 23rd council press conference, instead of simply advertising the details of a loan offered by United Bank to pay off the police department debt, the town's interim manager and council members launched into criticism and insults for the EDA and the Board of Supervisors, and in my opinion misrepresented the truth. While council claims to be a cooperative body, they haven't learned the lesson that you get more bees with honey than vinegar. Instead, they chose to be adversarial, no doubt at the guidance of their puppet master, the interim manager. Only the last council member speaker showed the class and wisdom to not fully engage in such behavior. In a display of cowardice, no opportunity was offered at that meeting for public participation because this council fears the truth. On May 8th, 2017, a memorandum of agreement was executed between the town, EDA, and county. In paragraph two, it states it is anticipated that the loan funding would be acquired by the EDA for the new market tax credit at one and a half percent interest annually. And in paragraph three, it states the town will fund to the extent legally permissible 100% of the EDA's debt service. The most operative term in that language is anticipated, and the definition of anticipated is not guaranteed. And thus, the one and a half percent rate was not certain. Shortly after that agreement was signed, the town was advised that in all likelihood it would not qualify for the new market program funding by Brian Phipps, who was an authority on the tax credit program. And the town was advised it should take advantage of a 2.65% rate, which was then available. But the town chose to roll the dice on the one and a half percent rate, which subsequently was not available. Recently, a council member declared the town had no legal or moral obligation to pay for the police department loan at a rate different from the one and a half percent rate. But the language just read is evidence showing that declaration to be false. I guess that only in a politician's mind can a written, signed agreement not have to be honored, and furthermore, to have the audacity to consider such poor judgment as a qualification to represent Front Royal as their mayor. Multiple council members at the press conference emphatically claimed that the EDA was uncooperative in attempting to resolve the police department debt, which was also untrue. The EDA Director Doug Parsons indicated the town was offered a two and a quarter percent rate through Mayor T. Walt to finance the police department debt earlier this year. But not only did council reject that solution, but there was even a suggestion to censor the mayor for his reasonable attempt to reach a settlement with the EDA. Council asserted that the EDA did not exhibit good faith to negotiate the matter without acknowledging they had a multimillion dollar civil lawsuit active against the EDA for over a year. Only a fool would expect the EDA to trust discussions with this council when they were being sued by that same entity. And while there were other EDA attempts to discuss the police department with the town, the council never showed itself to be a good faith partner, but instead promoted conflict instead of cooperation. Council members also cried crocodile tears at not having any explanation regarding the differences between an 8.4 million construction cost and the 8.9 million total indebtedness for the police department. However, the filed EDA countersuit clearly explains the amounts that totaled the 8.9 million figure. Plus, it wouldn't take a rocket scientist to conclude that the $500,000 difference represented debt service the EDA had incurred that the town had agreed to pay previously in the memorandum of agreement.
Mr. Kushner, you about finished?
Okay, I'll finish up here. While I have much to say about the ridiculous false comments made by the interim mayor regarding -- the interim manager regarding the CARES funds, Tom doesn't permit me to address that here, so my thoughts are available on a royal examiner town talk recorded earlier today. Hopefully, after the November election, a council of different composition will show itself to be more attuned to citizens' interests and demonstrate an attitude of cooperation over conflict and hire an outsider as a permanent town manager that all citizens can trust, respect, and be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kushner. Next speaker, please.
David Downs.
David Downs, 14 Chester Street, practicing criminal defense lawyer for the past 33 years in Front Royal. I've read the proposed demanding justice resolution on the agenda, item 10, and have several observations and questions. First, why are councilmen running for office the only councilmen seeking justice for citizens of Front Royal as a result of the EDA scandal? Should we impute that the other councilmen don't want justice? Of course not. Why doesn't the resolution ask the mayor, our town representative, to simply call Marcia Garth or Michael Parker tomorrow and let them know that our town still wants justice for our town? We don't need a resolution for that. I, as a private citizen, can and have done that. Why wait for two more months? There's no explanation in the resolution for that type of delay. When asking to expeditiously proceed to trial on these matters, are we taking into account that the Virginia Supreme Court has stayed virtually all jury trials between the entry of a null et pro se qui order on April the 17th, 2020, and today pursuant to, as of today's count, 11 Virginia Supreme Court orders? In other words, Warren County is not currently able to have a jury trial and hasn't since the null et pro se qui was entered. Have we so quickly forgotten that 14 defendants indicted by the special grand jury had their cases dismissed because of the demands on the former Commonwealth attorney to do something? That pressure to prosecute has led to the lost faith in the local criminal justice system that this resolution claims to further. Why doesn't the resolution request the federal government to prosecute these charges? If there is in fact a sincere belief that this town council can apply such pressure to prosecute, why not call Daniel P. Bubar, the Assistant U.S. Attorney for the District of Virginia, and have his office continue their investigation that culminated in a search warrant of the EDA in April of last year? The federal government would bring great resources and less conflicts of interest inherent with so many people involved in our small town in this EDA scandal you wish to address. However, the Assistant U.S. Attorney will tell you the same thing he told me today, that his office has a policy of neither confirming or denying if there is a pending criminal investigation. It will be a waste of time. Pure and simple. As a final observation, this is the exact kind of resolution I would want if my client was involved in the EDA scandal. I'm almost finished. I would want the prosecutor to feel rushed and not read all 100 million documents, which works out to reviewing over 1,000 documents per day for three solid years. Because they will not be prepared for trial and double jeopardy will preclude my client's prosecution. Rush to justice set my client free. Please be careful with what you wish for and end the political grandstanding a month before election.
Thank you, Mr. Downs. Next speaker, please.
William Huck.
William Huck, 409 East Main Street, Front Royal, Virginia. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, town manager, town attorney. Thank y'all for having me tonight. We've had a lot of questions lately about some of the events and stuff going on in our community. Everything's being canceled, everything's being done up. We have the closure of Main Street. Thank you all for allowing that to continue. So Hometown Halloween is going to be on my agenda. So not sure if we're going to do a Hometown Halloween, but I just wanted to let the council know here that the merchants of Main Street are planning to go forward with Halloween with extra provisions included in as a jack-o'-lantern lighting at dusk to be added to the festivities. So I just wanted to come and inform all of you while you were here tonight and say thank you for the closure of Main Street, and we are going to live it to the fullest. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huck. Next speaker, please.
There are no more speakers.
No more speakers?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you, Tina. Next item tonight is -- let me take this thing off. Next item tonight is reports, requests, reports for -- the first one is town officials or interim town manager. Mr. Matt, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We have with us this evening Executive Director Brandon Davis, Northern Shenandoah Valley Regional Commission here to say a few words.
Thank you, sir, for the opportunity to be here, Mr. Mayor and councilors. I always enjoy having the opportunity to come for you and brief you on some of the work that we're doing at the Regional Commission. I am the Executive Director of the Regional Commission, have been for about four years now. Seems like it hadn't been that long, but it has. We are a small regional government organization that's created, governed, owned, and operated by the local governments in the northern Shenandoah Valley. We were created about 50 years ago to do those things that you all wanted to do together, either because it makes more sense or because it's less expensive to do so. We have grown to our maximum size recently of 10 employees, so that gives you some scale of what we can do across five counties, City Winchester, and all the towns located within there. As usual, I choose one of our programs or happenings to dive a little deeper into to give you some substance rather than try to paint everything with a broad brush and brief you on everything that's going on in respect of your time. Tonight, I'll choose Go Virginia. It's an economic development program. We didn't do economic development until about four years ago, when our board directed us to look into it. We are not a recruitment and retention organization for economic development like a traditional economic development authority or an economic development office would be. We are doing the softer things that allow the local governments to do the work that you all need to do to retain business. We're getting the plans in place to give you competitive access to funding through the federal EDA, through USDA Rural Development, and other opportunities. More recently, we've been asked to take on a larger role in this program called Go Virginia. It was a business-led program that was stood up in 2016 through Richmond and funded by the General Assembly and rolled out across the regions. Our region is larger for Go Virginia than just the northern Shenandoah Valley. It incorporates the central Shenandoah Valley as well. So we are operating this in partnership with our partner organization, the Central Shenandoah Planning District Commission. We're the lead fiscal agent and more recently have also taken on the role of interim program manager, so kind of only continue to grow in what we're doing here. It's our goal to try to streamline this program and make it easier for folks to access the funding. The key to be able to do it is you have to work together with another local governing body to access the money. No local government can access it individually. You have to have at least two jurisdictions, most often more. We are working to spend the funds that we're allocated on a per capita basis, and we're also working to access a statewide competitive pool of funds. Normally, in order to access those, it has to be multiple regions working together across the state. We're trying to grow into that. As of more recently, the Commonwealth reallocated some of those statewide competitive funds in the form of economic resilience and recovery funding. It's on a million dollars that each region has access to that's tied to COVID response. It's something that didn't exist months ago, and it was just created. So we have until April of next year to access these funds, or they revert back to the pool of competitive funding. Some regions haven't accessed any, some have more requests than the funding allows. We're somewhere in the middle. But what I'm telling you is we have an opportunity in the near term to work together and access some funding that will go away if we don't access it, and it'll somewhere else in the Commonwealth will spend it. So we have an interim program director, like I said, Ashley Schickel is her name. She's taken on that role over the course of the last month in my office, and she's working collaboratively with jurisdictions to access this funding. The funding can't go directly to a business, it can't be used to supplant CARES funding, it can't be used for direct expenses for the local government, but it's for the targeted industries to boost local -- to boost the private sector and through collaboration and cooperation. The other piece of this, normally there's a one-to-one match and a significant local buy-in with actual dollars that don't -- that can't be in kind. You have to actually bring money to the table to access it. Some things have changed here, and the local investment has been waived, and not only that, it's no longer one-to-one, it's two-to-one to access these funding. So it's a better opportunity to access some funding in the near term, and I just wanted you to know that that's something new that is available and that we're going to be working on as well at the staff level. So I look forward to working with you all, I'll be glad to answer any questions or follow up with you more likely with details if the questions are too in-depth.
Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Davis, just a question about something you had spoke of previously. Have we made any process or progress as far as the, I think it was a tri-county recycling processing facility? You know, I'm really excited into seeing something like that coming to our area if we can possibly get it there.
Yes, sir. Last time I was here, which was three months ago, I spoke to that issue, and we had just at that, like the week before, I believe, closed out the study on that. We'd hired a private firm to do that and gone together with all the jurisdictions in the northern valley to try to figure out if there's a regional solution to our recycling challenges that we're facing, largely caused by changes in buyer habits as well as the global marketplace and what places like China and India will accept for recyclables. That's some background for those watching on TV and those who weren't around when we started this process. We ended up in a position where we do believe that there is an opportunity for regional collaboration to build a facility. The issue is the private sector, as it's supposed to do, has moved quicker than government, and there's a hope that the private sector will be building this facility. So that risk then shifts from the local government and the taxpayers to the private sector. There will obviously be some challenges on the other side of that, but our strategy has shifted from build our own facility or continue to explore building our own facility to make sure we work with the private sector to make sure whatever they develop will suit not just our needs, but the commercial and not just the commercial and industrial user, but also the local government user, better way to say that. So that's where we are now. Our hope is that that will proceed and that it will provide us the options that we need to make it economical while removing that risk of the taxpayer and the local government taking on the facility of its own. So that is subject to change depending on the strategy of the private sector. So we're still watching it, and we're communicating through a solid waste technical committee through our organization, all the solid waste local government managers get together on that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Continue.
Thank you, Brandon. Just wanted to let council know as the next group comes up for their presentation, Strategic Solutions by Trish, I'm going to introduce them in a moment, but Mr. Davis, during the height of the pande -- no, that's okay. During the height of the pandemic, he was organizing weekly or every couple weeks phone calls with all the city managers, county managers, county administrators in the region, and I found those to be very helpful for us to bounce off ideas with each other. So I really appreciate you taking the lead on that. I didn't get a chance to say that sooner. Okay, we have a group, our Tourism Marketing as well as Business Recovery Group, Strategic Solutions, members of council as a reminder. We retained their services several months ago. They have a presentation that they're going to roll through. I think the audio/video visual room is going to put it up on the screen here. And there it is. You want to test it to make sure the -- fantastic. Just as introduction, Mr. Mayor, members of council, we have Chris Griffin, Michelle McAfee, and Tricia Hudson, who owns Strategic Solutions by Trish. We've been working very closely with this organization over the last several months. Been very pleased with the amount of effort and time, resources, as well as the results, and we thought it was important for you to see that this evening. So Trish, I'll turn it over to you, and you can proceed.
Okay, thank you so much, and thank you so much for having us here tonight. Excuse me. Like Matt said, I'm Tricia Hudson, and I'm the owner of Strategic Solutions by Trish. Chris and Michelle are joining me, and we have one person who hasn't come up with us, Elena, who is also a part of our team as it relates to tourism and business recovery for the town. But first, I want to thank you not only for having us, but also for making the investment in this project for the town, and I hope that you're pleased with the results that we share with you tonight. We have some numbers that you'll, I think you'll be very happy with, and some materials that I think that you'll find very interesting if you haven't seen them already. So again, thanks so much for having us. We're excited about being here and sharing these results with you and to walk you through a variety of tactics that we've used in order to bring these numbers to you. And so let's go ahead and get started. Okay, so again, there are a variety of us who are working on this project, and so of course, my team here with me tonight, but also back home, and then Elena Patrice, who owns a social status, is right behind me, and feel free to join us here if you'd like. And then, of course, there's a great variety of business leaders who are volunteers that are working with us as well, and so you'll hear more about that as we go along. So collaboration has been key. So there you can see some of the team back at home that's working to promote business and business recovery and tourism here in the town, Elena. And then, like I said, there are some key folks within the government and also in the business arena that are helping to, that started this effort a few months ago and who are currently working on this effort and will continue to do so as we move forward. Okay, all right, so to start us off, we're going to show you, if you haven't seen already, a great video that was produced by a local videographer and also sponsored by a local business. I'm sorry there's not sound tonight for you. I hope that you'll go to the Discover Front Royal website if you haven't seen it and view it there because the sound is terrific, but we'll view it tonight.
For the record, I have had a chance to see this, and I do encourage people to go and listen to it because the sound is phenomenal.
Thank you. Yes, thank you so much. But thank you. But again, like I said, go onto the Discover Front Royal Facebook page and onto the website, and you'll be able to listen to it as well. Again, thank you to our local business owner who helped us sponsor that video. So tonight, you're going to learn a little bit about the increased traffic that we've seen not only to the Discover Front Royal website, but to social media, to print that we've been able to use, and to our radio advertisements that have gone forward in the town. And so you'll see specific strategies that we've come up with.
I'm sorry, Tricia, let me interrupt you. Hey, Dwayne, can you get it back up on the screen, please? This is the first time we've used this screen with our new swagat system, so we apologize for the audience, we're still trying to work out some of the kinks. We got a front and center camera, though, maybe that might.
It's working.
Well, as he's trying to get it up, you can go ahead and continue, Trish, if you'd like.
Okay, yeah, I do hope that we're able to get that, but the main thing is that we've been able to use different strategies to pull together some desired outcomes and also delivered measured results. So, all right, okay, our technical, we're going to get there. Okay, all right, now we're back on track. Okay, so the tourism effort started back with the website creation, the Discover Front Royal website creation back in 2019. So it was started, there were some tactics that were put in place, we saw some activity back then. However, that plateaued because it was one-dimensional. We weren't firing on all cylinders. We weren't taking a look at what we need to do, websites, social media, we weren't taking care of our print needs, we weren't on the radio, we didn't have all of these pieces integrated. And so, and technical difficulty still is happening. So all of that then created a little bit of a lull in what we were able to achieve during that period of time. And so we've then fast-forward to about February 2020, and that's when Elena, who is behind me, was hired, and she was really the one responsible for really amping up the website usage and social media usage for the town, and so especially as it relates to tourism. And so she is quite the wizard behind the curtain, if you will, in being able to identify the different avenues that we needed to use these two tactics. And so we're going to wait just one more minute. Okay. I know. I know. All right, okay. And so in February 2020, that happened. Again, the Back to Business, Back to Nature Committee of volunteers, the business leaders and community leaders, leaders within the town government, all came together and made some changes to the website and other areas, particularly search engine optimization was needed, and that's what happened during that period of time. And then, as Matt indicated, my company was hired in July of 2020, and it was our role to come up with an integrated communications plan and strategies to be able to move all of these pieces together with the right message, delivering on the right channel, and giving us the results that we were. delivered on the right channel and giving us the results that we were anticipating and desiring. Okay. All right. Are we controlling these slides now?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Again, comprehensive, integrated strategy, firing on all platforms. It's important for us to be able to deliver the content that we need to deliver to the various audiences that we have. We have quite a diverse demographic here in the town and also outside of the town. So it's important that we take a look at the age demographics, the income demographics, and where people are coming from, whether they're in the town and they want to take advantage of what is here, or if they're traveling to the town and spending money here, coming to visit here. And so we've got to be able to talk to all of those different constituency groups on different channels. And so again, it's important to have the integrated strategies like we've, we've put together. So you'll see a little bit more about this now. Again, the launch of the website was very important. And then fast forwarding a year, it was very important for us to take the next step and do some SEO work and to do the revamp of the front end and the back end of the website to make sure that it was performing to its optimal performance and that we were able to restructure the information that was on the website so that it was easily, information was easily found, whether it be about business recovery, the CARES Act, what's happening on Main Street, what events are happening in the town, how can people participate, how can people come and take advantage of what town, the Town of Front Royal has to offer in the way of attractions, business and industry. And so we had to do some reorganization there. And that was important because that set the stage for then how we would measure what we did during this period of time. And I'm going to turn it over to Chris for a minute as he's going to go through some of the stats.
Great, thank you. So just a little bit about the performance. As you can see here on this slide, we show when discoverfrontroyal.com was launched back in the end of May is when we have this data showing the growth here. So we registered the website with Google Analytics the end of May. So that's what the information you'll see here. That's the data that we have to show. So as soon as we began, we were pretty consistent averaging about 100 new views every, every day. And so this specific graph shows the users by day. It kind of trails off in the November range. And then in April, Back to Business, Back to Nature Committee comes on board. There's a slight dip in July, and that's when we came on board to try to push out all the stuff that we were doing. We had to optimize the website. Obviously, the website had to be down. So that's where that dip comes from there. So we did some maintenance and optimized per the tourism team's instructions. So this is another graph showing the same data but by month. So you can see we have the Google, Google Analytics data the end of May. And it kind of trails off around November, starts to decrease a little bit. But by the time we came on board in June and July, based off of Elena's hire and our hire, the team optimization, July, August and September have been a lot higher than what we've seen previously. So this graph shows not only new users but also sessions. So how many new visitors are coming to the website and how many times are they coming? So both of those increased since we've taken over. And also wanted to show the data by the last three months that we've been on board as well. So July 2019, this is an annual comparison. We see that we have a 40 cent percent increase for the new users and a 47 percent increase for the sessions in July. And then in August, it kind of shoots up to 82 percent year over year for August, increase in new users and a 90 percent in increase in new sessions. In September, it increases 43 percent for new users and 37 percent in sessions. So in conjunction with the town, we streamlined communication to make sure that the information is being shared through multiple channels, including Facebook, Instagram and Twitter. We have seen an increase of more than 1,000 likes and followers on Facebook. Instagram, which we didn't really use effectively, engaged effectively previously, we saw an engagement of more than 1,000 with more than 100 followers. And Twitter, which also wasn't engaged previously, now has more than 400 followers. All right. And so we wanted to drill down a little bit on Facebook. I think the majority of us can kind of recognize the likes and followers. Obviously, likes are more instinctual. I like this particular post or whatever it is. But followers, they want to see additional information consistently, right? They want to see the same type of information, what's going on with Front Royal. So those, that's what's being shown here is the likes and followers. So this goes all the way back to 2018, as far back as we could retrieve this, this data from, from Facebook. And what we found was in 2019, the total number of likes was almost 700 and the followers were 765 followers. So that was all of 2019. And what we've been able to do in 2020 have, we've been able to increase 150 percent the likes and 135 percent followers year over year. So this kind of drills down, you can kind of see the, the line graph of 2018, 19 and 2020. So just where we were in December, we were able to increase 8.2 percent year over year and then another 18.8 percent from where we were in 2019 to right now in September. So drastic numbers, basically doubling what we were able to do from the jump from 2018 to 2019. Same thing with followers. We see the consistency there as well. And these are just a couple of examples of some of our posts that we've done through Facebook, Twitter and Instagram. You can see one of our blog posts there in addition to some nice pictures that we've been taking and posting as well.
And we hope that you're all following what's happening on social media. So maybe you've already seen some of this. So what we also learned is that we needed to broaden our reach again, again. So we had all of these activities happening. We had all of this, this content flowing, but we needed to pick up some more followers and some, the ability to communicate our message to a wider audience. And so what we did was to go out and make sure that we had a, a list of all of the business leader groups in the area, some of the most popular websites as it relates to tourism and Facebook pages so that we could gather all that information and be able to synthesize it into a complete list of where we needed to put our content. So we did that and we came up with this short list of those that we needed to do some outreach with and to. And so what we did was we added about a little over a million too in access points for our, our Town of Front Royal. And so what we did is in all of our Facebook posts and different things that we share in, in social media, we also are tagging these groups so that they are then being able to share our information and being able to, to share our content. So I think that's really important so that we can share outside of not just our people that are looking at our website and looking at our social media posts, but more get the, you know, it's a ripple effect, right? So that was our approach to take there at 1.2 million additional prospects.
So this was a big thing that we started back in June. We posted our first blog. And so this is important because it helps to maximize our search engine optimization on the website, which is why we're seeing such great numbers on our website as well. So, you know, the efforts include businesses, events and natural attractions is what the blogs are kind of focusing on. So since June, we've already established 14 new blogs. And they just incrementally continue to kind of compile and do better than the last one. You can see on July 12th, first blog over 50 views. By July 28th, first blog over 100 views. And then the first one over 200 views in August. So we're seeing some, some increase there. The links also help with local businesses as well. All of these blogs are kind of focusing on specific attractions, specific businesses to get the word out about these. And so the links help with the website as well to bring traffic over. Okay. All right. This was another way we're connecting to potential tourists. We are targeting new demographics. And so we created short videos on a social media platform called TikTok. And this is to appeal to the user base, Gen Zs and millennials who are using this platform like crazy right now. I don't know if you've heard of it. So we had three videos that have been produced with steady traffic. We have 1,087 views from those three videos only. We just have 16 TikTok followers and 28 new likes. But again, this is from three 15 second videos that have been posted about the town. So this video does play. Hopefully, we'll be able to hear sound, but maybe not. But you'll be able to see like just a quick snippet. So again, these focus on local businesses, attractions. The latest one was about nature and going to Lower A Cavern. So we're really trying to focus on different areas. You may have heard TikTok might be here in the near future or not. So we do have a contingency plan with Instagram reels where we can do something similar with the 15 second videos.
So then on the more traditional route, we're back to the radio. And so we've done some paid radio advertisements. And so that's an annual contract that's about a $6,000 investment. So pretty minimal for 1,000 ads throughout the year. So again, broadcasting at the peak times for our listeners who fit our demographics, obviously that's important. And we want to make sure that we're sharing all the messages from not only tourism to business recovery to CARES Act to information that's really pertinent to all of the citizens of the town. And so again, it's important to be using the, the traditional aspects of, of marketing as well to, as well to the new aspects like Chris was just talking about. And so you can see there too that we have about 60 to 80 ads that run per month, which is very important. We talked about our, our scavenger hunt. Maybe some of you participated in that. We've talked about some different businesses and, and opening on Main Street, all things that are relevant to driving people to spend money and to come visit here. All right. And then we also tried a unique approach. And that was to integrate email campaigns into the marketing strategy. And so we partnered with COVID Business. We've worked with them before. They're out of the Hampton Roads area of Virginia. And what they did was they helped us identify 180,000 vetted emails that were in the tourism, leisure, attraction, food, beverage space so that we could communicate the message of Front Royal and tourism to that group of people. And we've done so in a three-part series. We've already had two of them go out. The first one was focused on the craft beer. And then of course, we integrated retail and restaurants as a part of it. And then the second part was focused on the distilleries because it was a, a craft beer, distillery and wine series. And of course, again, focusing on retail and restaurants with that. And then this last one will be in October and again, focused on wineries and, and restaurants, retail. And so what we saw there, not only the 180,000 people that we reached, we also saw a very important piece of information. And that was that we had a very large click through rate. We had an open rate that was impressive. All, all across, we increased a visibility for the Town of Front Royal and to be able to say that this was a unique project that reached a lot of people on social media channels and also in our email campaigns. Okay. All right. Very good. So building off of the email structure, we implemented a new structured communication tool to aid in local business recovery. So as part of our strategic plan, we used the existence, existing contact, contact, constant contact that the town had. But we implemented a plan to send out the emails bi-weekly, focusing the messages targeting to what the businesses need and messages that also were reiterated on Discover Front Royal website and on social media. The emails reach about 2,000 local Front Royal residents and businesses with each one of the sends. So, so far we've delivered nine of these targeted messages to 22,500 people. And as part of the Constant Contact campaign, we also created and delivered digital forums that allowed local business leaders to communicate back with us their interest in participating in Small Business Saturdays and other marketing events where they can provide their logos and their images and their information to be featured on marketing pieces on Discover Front Royal on social media as well. And we've had great success, actually. The open rates for the Constant Contact emails have been far greater than the national avid, average. And the click through rate has also been far above the national average. As you can see, the industry average is about 12.6 percent and the click through is about 5.4. But for our Constant Context, the open rate was about 22 percent and the average click through rate was 7 percent just in the last 60 days. And then some of the events that we've helped promote and market include the scavenger hunts, where we're very popular, family friendly, and also the downtown rebound, which gave restaurants and local shops more outdoor space to set up. And also, you know, gave more opportunities, especially during this time period, for restaurants and businesses to be able to continue to sell their products and have their restaurants open as well. So we helped definitely with them, the promoting and marketing of those as well. One of the upcoming events that we have is the Back to Nature Celebration. And we've worked closely with local business owners and organizations to plan and market and promote the celebration on October 10. It will also take place during another event that Tricia's going to speak about in a moment that will run concurrently. During this Back to Nature Celebration, we're drawing in nature lovers, canoe lovers from all over the region to take in free canoe rides on the river, shop at our outdoor themed booths along Main Street. There'll be vendors set up from various organizations and businesses, including Mountain Trails, Front Royal Outdoors. And also the Warren County, Front Royal Appalachian Trail Community will be there with their quest program that's COVID friendly to allow people to go out and hike on these different quests and earn badges from them. There'll also be artists there like Rose Turner and Chris Anderson and live music sponsored by Front Royal Brewing as well. And that leads us up to our next big event that Tricia will talk a little bit more about. Again, trying to reach all generations, all demographics. And so one of the events that will be new for us this year as well is our influencer event. And that is where we'll invite social media influencers that have a very large following to come and join us for a weekend in town. We'll have a routine that, or a route, excuse me, that will follow and to make sure that they catch as many local businesses as possible, be able to share their, their story and the information on social media about what they're experiencing. You know, it'll be quite a fun filled activity of, or a weekend of activity only. It will be interesting to see what they, what they share on their Instagram and Facebook pages and, and all the things that they are, are going to be communicating through. And so about 10 to 15 social media influencers will join us, again, with a very large following, something different to do for the town going forward. So we're excited to host them during that weekend and show them all the great things that we have in our town to, to go and do and consume and see. Michelle's going to talk a little bit about our grant activity.
One of my primary roles as the grant coordinator is to assist local businesses. So one of the first items that I worked on was a webinar where we invited local businesses to come in and learn more about the Town of Front Royal CARES Act and Rebuild Virginia, which was created to target those small businesses that might not have received the funds due to various reasons with the CARES Act and PPP loan. And basically, we assisted these local businesses with the questions that they had regarding the application process to make sure that they were completely prepared when the portal opened and they understood everything that they needed so that they didn't miss the time to get their applications in. And then also just to clarify the application and submission process. And I was able to work with the state to preempt any questions and be able to deliver those to the local business leaders during that webinar. Additionally, we've secured a grant from the Norfolk Southern Corporation to assist with the Back to Business initiatives. And that's $5,000 of new money for the Town of Front Royal. And additionally, our team is working on more than $500,000 in grant opportunities over the next three months through corporate, government and foundational grant sources to aid in revitalization projects as well as business recovery in the town. That takes us to our other successes. That takes us to our other successes.
Yeah, so we're, we're excited to also work on some additional projects. You know, all of this will need to be maintained. So this will be what, what we will focus on from now through the end of the year. But also, we'll be helping to develop an annual report for the town that'll be shared with, with the citizens. We'll be able to continue to work with the Back to Business, Back to Nature Committee. All the things that you saw today that were represented and measured, we'll still be working on those and pushing that content and actually developing the content and delivering it. And then continue to refine the infrastructure of communicate, an integrated communication strategy so that we're able to then pass the baton to the company that's hired to do your tourism promotion throughout 2021. So we've been very appreciative of the opportunity to do all of these great things that you saw today. We hope that you're pleased with the numbers that you're seeing for the investment that you made. And again, thank you for making that investment. It's made a great, a great big deal of difference. And we definitely hear that from the merchants here in the town. So again, thank you for your time tonight, and we'd love to entertain any questions.
I have one.
Sure.
So the influencers are coming, and these are the specific routes. Are they only going to be visiting like Main Street businesses or will they go elsewhere?
They'll go elsewhere.
Okay.
Yes, we've tried to make it so that we, we cover as much ground as we can during that weekend.
Excellent. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Well, thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris and Michelle and.
And Elena.
Yeah, I was going to touch on Elena in a moment. Just to let the council know, if you noticed in April, town staff, we really wanted to get, get a foothold in the recovery efforts of our local businesses due to the pandemic. And so the Back to Nature, Back to Business, Back to Business, Back to Nature Committee have been meeting frequently to try to help in that recovery efforts. And then with, with strategic solutions coming in, they really offered a very high level of expertise in developing a strategic communications plan, which I think is critical. I mean, you can see the type of results they're getting in just a few months. And so I'm really excited. You know, they're tasked with laying the foundation, so to speak, as it relates to tourism marketing moving forward. And I think you guys, you guys have set, set a great foundation so far. So thank you. And then lastly, Elena Pietrus with social status. Elena's been helping us not only with the outreach as it relates to business recovery and tourism marketing, but also in, in human resources. We've converted much of our human resources process from a newspaper advertising and then only town website advertising to reaching out more on social media, LinkedIn, et cetera. We're getting now hundreds of applications, which is, which is very refreshing. So I thank, thank you, thank you a lot for all your efforts on that. That's all I have for that. Mr. Mayor, Ms. Mayor, I have now, I have some Pride and Performance, two Pride and Performance awards that I'd like to give out. If you'd join me down, down at the bottom, Mr. Mayor. Okay, if I can get Ms. Kayla Thomas, then I think her husband or? Oh, he's, he's not a front row guy. So as I've shared in the past, this is one of my favorite opportunities to recognize employees that have just really gone above and beyond what they, they, you would think an employee should go. Kayla's collection efforts for meals and lodging taxes and business professional occupancy licensing has tremendously helped the town during the recovery process for COVID-19. Meals tax collection for 2020 was at 99% of budgeted revenue, and I feel that is a direct reflection of Kayla's persistence on the collection and communication with businesses that are noncompliant for remittance. And just to let you know, the meals tax is, it's collected by the business and they have a responsibility to turn that over, turn, you know, turn over for the appropriate authorities. And so Kayla chases it down and gets that for the town, town government. The meals and lodging taxes collected by businesses is held in trust for the town and if not remitted to the town is a criminal offense. Kayla communicates with businesses to avoid legal action. Filing criminal complaints involves creating the necessary documents, going to the magistrate, having the business served, and then going to court. During the month of June, Kayla filed 15 criminal complaints for noncompliance for meals and lodging and operating without a business license. This is in addition to the multiple notifications, both written and telephone, that were provided to many businesses. Collecting money during these difficult times is hard, but the town, but for the town to be able to collect 99% of the budgeted meals tax revenue, to me, seems just unprecedented. Kayla's efforts have helped enable the town to use contingency funds that were set aside in other needed areas. For that, I'm grateful, and I know I speak for the council, we're grateful as well, Kayla. Thank you so much, and Mayor has a fact to like to give. Officer Haywood. Thanks, sir. This is a really special award as well. And, you know, again, it's, it's what, what our employees do when no one is watching, right? And, and how they, how they interact with the public. This was back in June, and we're, and we're just now getting it, getting it presented to you. It says, "A few weeks ago," and this is from a female citizen of the Town of Front Royal, "I had a beloved pet pass away in my home and couldn't lift him on my own. I tried calling several friends to no avail. I ended up calling the local police, thinking that maybe animal control could help. The dispatcher did not disregard my call and sent Officer Haywood to my home. He was very respectful, compassionate, and professional. He and another officer, I didn't get his name, moved my dog to my car. I apologized for asking for the help, and Officer Haywood reassured me that he was there to serve the community in any way possible. So much of what they do goes unrecognized, and I just want to let them know I appreciate them being there. I don't know what their job scope encompasses, but I would think they easily could have said, 'Not our problem.'" Living in a small town and having caring and compassionate law enforcement goes a long way. I know this probably isn't the most heroic, dramatic story, but it's the small kindness that makes a community. I really appreciated that, those comments. Officer Haywood, thank you so much for what you do. Okay, Mr. Mayor, members of council, it's impossible for me to top that. So I'm concludes my, my reports. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item tonight is the Request Inquiries of the Town Council. Anybody has any questions or any, any speech, whatever, tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to speak. Councilman Holloway has already sees my notes, and so he's like, yeah, go for it. Go for it. First, let me say thank you for the Boy Scouts coming out tonight and joining us. I'm sure this is riveting conversation, and you guys are thoroughly enjoying it. So I hope you get something, a badge or credit or something for being here. If not, tackle Huck on your way out and shake him down for some ice cream or something like that. But thank you for coming out tonight. Also want to say congratulations and thank you to Kayla, who just disappeared. But I can't imagine that, that job of having to call and collect funds, especially during this difficult time. So certainly appreciative of her service. And also Officer Haywood for representing the town and his service. And I got to say, Chief, we had quite a few neighborhood kids out playing the other day, and one of your officers drove by and extended, I think, the, the free Slurpee certificates to them. And I saw him do it from a distance. I couldn't recognize who it was, but I started laughing to myself because I knew immediately it was going to be the equivalent of an ice cream truck pulling up and kids rushing out from the house. And sure enough, I think about 15 little kids descended on the vehicle quickly. And I wanted to commend your officers because, you know, it's one thing to just take the time to, to be able to do that, but it was another thing when the officer realized that he didn't have enough Slurpee certificates and, and called in for reinforcements. And another vehicle showed up to, to pass out the Slurpee certificates. And I just wanted to say, you made those little, little kids' days. And so I wanted to thank your officers for that. And Officer Haywood's customer service just reminded me of that. So you guys do a phenomenal job, and I wanted to share that story. If you come to these meetings often, you'll know that when remarks are made that question the integrity of council, I usually like to address them. And so tonight, Mr. Kueschner brought forward a few facts that I wanted to respectfully address. I know when the mayor made the comment last Wednesday about his, or expressed his disagreement with what transpired Wednesday night, I knew that there was going to be some ambiguity in that. And I'm not sure, I can't speak for the mayor, but I'm not sure if he expressed his disappointment because council took the opportunity to make some clarifying statements on where they were with the EDA or because he disagreed with the facts that were being expressed that night. I'm sure that he can clarify that. But with regard to a few of the comments that were made in misrepresenting the truth, I, I think that, that nothing could be further from the case, from the truth. I'm happy to be fact-checked on any of the statements that were made. One of the things that I think is really important to recognize is that everything that was represented that night was based in documentation and conversations, resolutions that we produced proof of as well. The comment was made that people were not allowed to speak on Wednesday night, and that is true. It was a press conference where the council was using a, a special meeting as an opportunity to be able to share information with the public and open it up to the press to ask questions. It wasn't an open forum to the public. So I apologize if that was misleading, but that was the intent of the press conference. You made a comment about the operative word of being anticipated in pursuit of our loan with the EDA or the EDA representing the town in pursuit of our loan. I wanted to pause on that for just a second because, think about the scenario where you're referencing a council using a registered agent to pursue a loan on their behalf. And if at any point in time, a council or in this, you know, yeah, a council thought to themselves, huh, this loan can go anywhere from 4% or higher, or 4% or less, or in this particular case, represented in the high ones, and then ended up in the 3% to 4% range? If anticipated was the word that was used to describe the loan, what council would ever sign off on moving forward with a particular interest rate? I think that's misleading to say that anticipated should have allowed for flexibility in an interest rate. With regard to the interest rates from the EDA, yes, you are right. There are other offers of higher interest rates to the town. I think what is particularly frustrating, though, is if the town was able to go to the bank that was working with the EDA and broker a deal for a lower interest rate, why couldn't the EDA just done that to begin with? Why did we have to settle, if you will, for a 3% loan or something that was offered just shy of that? Why would we have to do that? If we could go and broker a deal for a better interest rate, why wouldn't the EDA represent that interest rate to begin with? And lastly, the 8.4 versus 8.9 million, you are right, that was mentioned in the suit. That was the exact point of our statements that night. 8.9 million was first disclosed in that suit to the Town Council. It wasn't disclosed, as I think was being represented in a conversation with the town of, oh, by the way, this is the debt service that is owed. It was first disclosed in a lawsuit to the town. So I just wanted to, I wanted to clarify those facts. And as I've, as I've extended before, Mr. Kueschner, I, I'm happy to sit around and discuss this. I'm not going to be a council member that's just going to come up here, you know, and be able to, you know, in this case, you have the exchange and then be able to say something back to the town. I'm happy to stick around and discuss it and, and hear you out thoroughly through this. But I did want to take the opportunity to, to clarify a few of those statements. Thank you.
Anyone else? Number one? This time, we have the report of the mayor. I'm happy to see the Boy Scout troop number four here this evening. They were being sponsored by the Front Royal Rotary Club, and we're glad you're here. We appreciate everything you've done. Caleb Holmes, I believe that's the name. Is that correct? Someone. But it is good to have you guys here tonight. Come, come anytime you feel like you need to come, and we, we enjoyed your presence here this evening, as well as everyone else here this evening. So that, that, it concludes my, anything I want to talk about this evening because I don't want to get into the situation of the EDA. So I'd rather not even discuss that this evening. Next item tonight is Reparations and additions or deletions to the agenda. Hearing none, we go to item number seven, Consent Agenda Items. We have, I believe, let's see, 1, 2, 4, 7, 8, 9. First one would be Vacation of Right-Away Policy Reviews, Proclamation of Public Works Week, Third Quarter Write-Off of Bad Debts, Sole Source Purchase of Portable Message Board, Bid for Electrical Polls, Move Location of October the 19th Regular Meeting to Another Date, COVID-19 Emergency Ordinance Amendment, FY21 Budget Amendment, DMV Speed/Alcohol Enforcement. Do you hear a motion? Do you hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the Consent Agenda Items.
Have a second. Motion in seconds. Anybody want to pull anything off the Consent Agenda? Could we have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Seelot?
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie?
Yes.
Councilman Holloway?
Yes.
Councilman Meza?
Yes.
Councilman Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carried. Item number eight this evening is Ordinance Amendment to Chapter 138. This is our second reading. Ms. President, would you read the summary, please?
Council's requested to adopt on its second and final reading an ordinance to amend Front Royal Town Code, Chapter 138, peddlers, solicitors, and itinerant merchants to allow the use of vending vehicles operated on town streets to peddle ice cream and other frozen desserts as presented.
Do you hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that council adopt on its second and final reading an ordinance to amend Front Royal Town Code, Chapter 138, peddlers, solicitors, and itinerant merchants to allow the use of vending vehicles operated on town streets to peddle ice cream and other frozen desserts as presented.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I could have a roll call.
Vice Mayor Seelot?
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie?
Yes.
Councilman Holloway?
Yes.
Councilman Meza?
Yes.
Councilman Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next item tonight is item, item number nine, FY Budget Transfer and Bid Approval for SCADA System. Could you read the summary, please?
Council's requested to approve an FY21 inter-fund budget transfer in the amount of $113,280, to allocate funds from the general fund, reserve funds, to the electric fund, and to approve the purchase of a SCADA system upgrade from Servalent Technology Incorporated in the amount of $113,280.
Do you hear a motion?
Yes, I move that council approve an FY21 inter-fund budget transfer in the amount of $113,280 to allocate anticipated CARES funds from the general fund to the electric fund, and to approve the purchase of a SCADA system upgrade from Servalent Technology Incorporated in the amount of $113,280.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion?
Yes, please. The cover page for this item states general fund COVID-19 expense. Per the attached memo, we are to be reimbursed with funds from the CARES Act. We are unable to do so because according to the U.S. Department of the Treasury's website, the expenditure would not qualify. Per the website, the CARES Act requires the payments from the coronavirus relief fund only be used to cover expenses that, one, are necessary incurred due to the public health emergency with respect to the coronavirus, and, two, were not accounted for in the budget most recently approved as of March 27, 2020, which is the most recently approved as of March 27, 2020, which is the date of the enactment. SCADA can be found on pages 52 and 53 of our fiscal year 2021 budget. Further, per Mr. Farrell, the CARES Act committee will not approve the expenditure for the above mentioned reasons, so we will not get reimbursed. It is for this reason I will vote no on the proposed amendment, and I have a link to the Treasury website if anybody needs it.
Any other discussion?
Point of clarification, Mr. Tewalt, just to make sure the public's aware. The Finance Director and I, and I guess we pass it on to counsel, the CARES Act Committee at the county level was asking for additional information as it relates to the SCADA system and other, and the PSAP. We had a four-page memo prepared to send out, and then on Friday, we had a conversation with Mr. Farrell, and good, good, good exchange of emails. And it, we believe we're going to be able to pay for the SCADA system, I believe, we're confident we're going to be able to pay for the SCADA system, the PSAP, as well as our business recovery money through the categorizing the law enforcement LEOS monies that's been spent from June 1 until November. That's what the county is doing. That's what they recommended that we do. That way, it takes away their concern about spending the money for SCADA and PSAP. It should be noted that other jurisdictions are using the money from SCADA for, for the, in the CARES Act. But by doing it the way we're doing it, we're going to have approximately $1.2 million that we'll be able to spend over the next several months into next, next year. And I think it's going to offer a great deal of flexibility. So the Treasury did come out with clarification as it relates to using law enforcement hours as well as their benefits, and so we're going to be able to account for it that way. So just wanted to clarify that point, Mr. Mayor. That's new information that just came out Friday and over the weekend.
Mr. Mayor? There was a revised motion for item number nine.
Before we go back to the motion, may I ask a clarifying question of Mr. Tiedrick, Mr. Mayor?
My understanding was that they did read the revised motion.
I don't think I did.
Oh, you didn't? I'm sorry. Okay. Apologize. I refilled it, but I thought it sounded exactly what I have here. Can you go ahead then and read the actual revised motion, please?
Shouldn't we vote on the original motion first?
Well, we can, but I really don't think it wasn't appropriate to begin with, so I think that, is that all right, Mr. Napier? Do we have to vote on the first one or then bring up the second one?
Take my mask off. If the maker of the motion and the second of the, seconder of the motion want to withdraw the original motion and substitute, they can do that.
Would you second withdraw or second?
Second.
And would you withdraw your motion?
Yes.
Would you read the corrected motion in, please?
Yes, without a mask. I move that council approve an FY21 inter-fund budget transfer in the amount of $113,280 to allocate funds from the general fund, reserve funds, to the electric fund, and to approve the purchase of a SCADA system upgrade from Servalent Technology Incorporated in the amount of $113,280.
Now, do you hear a second?
Second.
Any more discussion on this subject?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, Councilman Thompson brought up a good point that I just wanted to clarify. Thank you, Mr. Tiedrick, for your clarification, but just on the same page that I'm following here. So are you saying that there isn't a plan to apply for CARES Act funding for the SCADA system, but rather use the CARES Act funding to fund other expenses within the police department that would, in essence, offset the expenditure of us having to go out of the general fund for the SCADA system?
Yes and no. Let me clarify.
Okay.
Thank you for that. So originally, when we were requested to submit a spending plan to the CARES Act Committee that's being run by the county, we itemized certain items. PSAP, SCADA for wastewater treatment, SCADA for electric, et cetera, and then it's, and an allocation for business recovery assets. They replied back that they, they had concerns that we may be misinterpreting the CARES Act as it relates to money going towards the PSAP and money going towards the SCADA system. So Rick Farrell had refocused our attention on a Treasury, Treasury Department FAQ that was recently sent out. I want to say the 21st of September, does that sound right? And it specifically talks about allocating money, allocating wages and benefits from law enforcement, LEOs, that that can be reimbursed through the CARES Act. Okay? So what we're planning to do, we're going to be resubmitting a second round, a second spending approval. We're going to put down, we believe we can hit the 1.2 million, which is our allocation from the county. We believe we can hit that almost to the dollar. So we're going to get back the money from the CARES Act as reimbursed through the PD wages and benefits, and then the council's going to be able to allocate those funds yourself. So one item you may, you're going to spend money on is the PSAP. One money is reimbursement for the PSAP. One money could be the SCADA. And then you can set your monies aside for business recovery like we planned all along. So it's going to, but the good news with that is, the business recovery efforts, you may decide to do a portion of it in December and a portion of it in April. And you can still do that because you'll have the money in your general funds from the CARES Act. Does that make sense?
The bottom line is, we're getting the 1.2 million to be able to disperse to these different expenses.
Yes.
Whether we use it for the SCADA or not.
Yes. Now, it's got to go through, we've got to go submit our spending plan, they approve the spending plan, we have to show all the expenses of the police officers, et cetera. They go through them all, they validate, we have to duplicate, triplicate, and then they cut the check. And again, this, this happened Friday, Saturday, and we had three or four email exchanges on Saturday. That's why the revised motion tonight.
Anyone else?
Yes, I just wanted to ask, I know Mr. Jenkins isn't here, but Ms. Scott, I believe, is here. I assume those that are in the room see what we're seeing, but could you speak to the SCADA and like, and your comments about why we're purchasing it at this time? Does that make sense? Or maybe BJ can? I mean, I'm just, the couple paragraphs we're talking about here is, so the public understands what we're spending it on.
So the SCADA system, it helps the reliability of our system, it helps for teleworking. So for instance, instead of sending a line crew out to switch over services when we have a substation go down or a circuit go down, the SCADA monitors that, monitors it so that our crews can switch over that services from working maybe at home or at the office versus sending crews out and having to go out there and actually make the manual switch or actually locate the downed item. So if we have a squirrel get up into a transformer, the SCADA system will notify them exactly where that occurs at. So it helps, helps in that capacity. As Mr. Tiedrick said, other localities have used the CARES funding for SCADA, but I guess the, the crew approving it didn't feel that this was, within the guidance at this point in time. Okay? Any other questions?
Anyone else? No other comments or questions, I could have a roll call.
Vice Mayor Seelock?
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie?
Yes.
Councilman Holloway?
Yes.
Councilman Meza?
Yes.
Councilman Thompson?
No.
Motion carried. Item number 10 tonight is resolution seeking justice for citizens of Front Royal as a result of the EDA scandal. Ms. President, would you read the summary, please?
Councilman Cockrell and Holloway request that council consider a resolution seeking justice for citizens of Front Royal as a result of the EDA scandal as drafted.
Before we make a motion, does anyone, Ms. Cockrell, or do you want to read the resolution?
I can read the resolution. I, could I, when would be an appropriate time for me to share some comments? Would you rather?
Not until after, after we've had, get on the floor.
Got it.
But do you want to read the actual resolution?
Sure.
Or not? Yeah, I mean, you don't have to.
Or Ms. President can.
But if you all want to read it, let's read it this time.
Do you want me to?
You want me to read it now?
Yes.
I think that's what he's asking.
A resolution demanding justice for the citizens of the town of Front Royal related to the embezzlement of funds from the Front Royal Warren County Economic Development Authority. Whereas on March 26, 2019, the Front Royal Warren County Economic Development Authority, hereafter known as the EDA, filed a civil suit alleging the embezzlement of over $18 million by its former executive director, Jennifer McDonald, hereafter McDonald, and other persons and entities. And whereas the Warren County Circuit Court on March 27, 2019 convened a special grand jury to investigate and based upon probable cause to issue true bills of indictment against individuals who may have committed claims related to the embezzlement of said funds from the EDA. And whereas during the following year, the special grand jury obtained over 1 million documents related to the various alleged embezzlement schemes and returned over 75 true bills of indictment against McDonald and others. And whereas the special prosecutor, Michael Parker, who was designated by Marcia Garst, Harrisonburg Rockingham County Commonwealth Attorney, to prosecute these matters, moved to dismiss all of the true bills returned by the special grand jury based upon his professional inability to provide discovery to the defendants and his lack of preparation to competently prosecute the over 75 true bills previously issued against McDonald and other defendants. And whereas Chief Judge Bruce Albertson, who regularly sits in Harrisonburg, granted Parker's motion to dismiss said indictments null proscay, which permits Parker to seek reinstatement of the charges at a later date. And whereas over nine months have passed since Parker was appointed to work with the special grand jury and prosecute these matters, giving him ample time to review the various indictments and documentation supporting these indictments, and to decide whether sufficient evidence exists to seek conviction of McDonald and the other defendants for the alleged criminal activity contained within these 75 true bills previously issued by the special grand jury. And whereas justice for the citizens of Front Royal in these matters have thus far been justice denied as a result of Parker's dismissed said indictments. And whereas many town citizens have lost faith in the local criminal justice system as a result of Parker's seeming reluctance to prosecute the alleged criminal activity. And whereas the Front Royal Town Council is determined to ensure that the citizens of Front Royal receive justice in this matter, including but not limited to the criminal prosecution of all crimes and the payment of restitution to reimburse our citizens for the alleged $18 million embezzled from the EDA. And be it resolved, the Front Royal Town Council, in order to attempt to restore the trust of our citizens and our local criminal justice system, demands that within 60 days of the adoption of this resolution, Marcia Garst, Commonwealth Attorney for Harrisonburg Rockingham County, direct her surrogate, Michael Parker Esquire, to request that Harrisonburg Circuit Judge Clark Ritchie reconvene the special grand jury to consider reissuing any of the former true bills of indictment, which she and her surrogate have determined are worthy of criminal prosecution, and to expeditiously proceed to trial on these matters and seek restriction from those convicted as a result of the funds embezzled from the EDA and by extension from the citizens of Warren County. And be it further resolved if Michael Parker Esquire chooses not to reissue true bills of indictment and the alternative to publicly explain to the citizens of Front Royal and Warren County why no state prosecution has been sought related to these matters and how they propose to ensure the citizens of Front Royal are guaranteed a just result. The clerk of counsel is directed to forward this resolution to the Board of Directors of the Front Royal Warren County Economic Development Authority and the Warren County Board of Supervisors requesting that they adopt a similar resolution on behalf of town and county residents, demanding justice on behalf of our mutual constituents.
Okay, the resolution's been read. Do you hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that council approve a resolution seeking justice for citizens of Front Royal as a result of the EDA scandal as drafted.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Mayor Tewalt, would this be appropriate time? So as I've been going door to door seeking input from the town citizens, many, many town citizens have asked me why those who embezzled money from the EDA have not been brought to justice. It's obviously first and foremost on their minds. With the recent announcement that the former executive director of the EDA has filed bankruptcy, effectively preventing the EDA and its civil lawsuit from recovering any money from her personally, the criminal prosecution of her and others responsible for the embezzlement is the only way that our citizens can be paid back. This would be in the form of criminal restitution for the millions of dollars that we are all paying now and will have to continue to pay in the future to keep the EDA afloat. Several months ago, the process, the special prosecutor dismissed over 75 indictments against the former executive director and others, promising that he would ensure that those who committed crimes would be brought to justice. The town citizens and I suspect county citizens as well as well want that to occur sooner rather than later. They deserve swift action by the special prosecutor on an explanation as to why no one is currently being prosecuted for these crimes. This resolution before us tonight seeks an answer for the citizens of Front Royal. The citizens of Front Royal and Warren County are victims of these crimes, and by extension, members of the town council, the board of supervisors, the EDA board, past and present, all are victims. The resolution requests that the board of supervisors and the EDA board adopt a similar resolution requesting action by the special prosecutor. This request is based upon my many conversations with citizens on their front porch, walking down the street, or just this past weekend at my class reunion even. I believe the community wants us to work together to bring the criminals to justice first and then leave for another day how any of the monies recovered should be distributed as a result of the crimes. With the recent bankruptcy filing, which may be followed by others, may be followed by others, our focus must move, in my opinion, from the civil lawsuits to seeking criminal restitution in any criminal indictments brought by the special prosecutor or in cases brought by the U.S. Attorney's Office if the special prosecutor has turned the investigation over to the FBI. One way or the other, I think our citizens deserve an explanation. Finally, I'm hopeful that the recent settlement of the principal debt for the Front Royal Police Department and the adoption of this resolution by all three bodies, the town council, the board of supervisor, and the EDA board, hopefully, would serve to foster a more cooperative relationship going forward between all of us. The resolution acknowledges that we are all victims and must, as a community, focus on bringing those responsible for the wrongdoing to justice. Those are my thoughts.
Anyone else?
Sorry. Go ahead. Okay. To prepare myself for this meeting and to make an educated vote on this matter, I reviewed several news articles, et cetera, a few things. There are over 1 million documents related to the matter that the prosecuting attorney has to get through. Mr. Parker said in an email to the Northern Virginia Daily, "I assure you, I am not pleased about this. I also assure you that this is not the end. However, while it is my duty to bring justice to the guilty, it is also my duty to be just and ethical in my conduct at all times to everybody." That includes people who have been accused but have not yet been found guilty. At the current time, I am unable to satisfy certain basic obligations I have to the defendants, which have existed since before I was appointed on the case. I cannot ethically keep this status quo. In fact, if I tried to keep the case active, I'd run the risk of a judge at some point dismissing them with prejudice so that I could not bring them back. Unfortunately, I was unable to reach Mr. Parker today to ask if there was any update. I am not sure if my counsel has contacted him for additional information before demanding certain actions. It is my opinion, it is better to wait and have it done the right way versus rushing and having the entire thing dismissed with no chance of bringing it back. Further, the Virginia State Police have stated, as of today, they are still investigating this matter as well. This is a legal issue, so I prefer to wait. This is a legal issue, so I prefer to leave that to lawyers and political issues to the politicians. It is for the reasons stated that I will vote no on this item tonight.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. You know, our citizens demand justice and they deserve justice, and I think this is a step forward in the right direction. I know there was a citizen here earlier this evening that said of a local political party, said that we're political, it's called political grandstanding. No, it's called demanding justice, and that's what we're here for, for the citizens of Front Royal, not for a political party. Thank you.
Anyone else? Here in none, could have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Seelock?
Yes.
Councilman Cockrell?
Yes.
Councilman Gillespie?
Yes.
Councilman Holloway?
Yes.
Councilman Meza?
Yes.
Councilman Thompson?
No.
Motion carried. Last item tonight is a closed meeting. Do you hear motion?
I was going to say, I can do this one, see if I don't mess it up.
Mr. Mayor, I move that council go into closed meeting for the following purposes. With respect to the town manager's position, the discussion, consideration, or interview of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, salaries, or resignation of specific public office officers, appointees, or employees of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711.A.1 of the Code of Virginia. With respect to the town's lawsuit against the EDA, consultation with a legal counsel and briefings of staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. Probable litigation, meaning litigation that has been specifically threatened or on which the public body or its legal counsel has reasonable bias to believe will be commenced by or against a known party pursuant to Section 2.2-3711.A.7 of the Code of Virginia. Regarding a town public alley, the disposition of publicly held, publicly held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of town council pursuant to Section 2.2-3711.A.3. Better not have to read that again.
Do you hear a second? Motion second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight. I know we'll be going into closed meeting, and there should not be anything brought forward after the meeting. Meeting adjourned.